All right, with it being seven o'clock, we will call to order this regular board meeting of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District. Tracy, may we have a roll call, please?
Carrie Alice.
Here.
Justin Thomas.
Here.
Tara Bowman.
Here.
Scott Hawke.
Here.
Corey Jones.
Here.
Matt Mecca.
Here.
Michael Eddy.
With all seven members in attendance, we do have a quorum this evening. The mission statement of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District is to ensure that students excel with intellect and virtue, inspired by innovative educators who engage and challenge each individual. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to make any changes to the agenda this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Public comment, anyone wishing to speak tonight? There's forms in the back, all you do is bring one up, and then we'll move the microphone. Mike, can you grab the microphone and just slide it up for the speakers?
We can make do. Just real quick, I just wanted to thank all of the members of the school board. I know when you stepped up to volunteer and give to your community and our kids, that none of you anticipated the chain of events that would happen over the course of your term, and I know it has been hard on you professionally, emotionally, with your families, with the school, and I truly deeply appreciate all of your work, all of your efforts, all of your sleepless nights, and I hope moving forward that we as a community can continue to come together as we have over the past few months, and that we can continue to rely on your support and your experience and moving forward and kind of going forward to some brighter, happier days. You guys all have so much of yourselves that you've given, and we hope that you continue to give to this community and our kids in the future. However, all of your roles may or may not change, but again, thank you very much for everything that you've done, and hopefully this is the start of something new for the community and that we can all be in this together, because whatever happens, it shouldn't just depend upon whoever's sitting up here. This is all of our kids, all of our community, it's all of our responsibility, and you guys had some hard things to deal with, and there's going to be hard things to deal with in the future, but working together, I'm confident that we can get it done, so thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Biggest crowd in a long time, nobody? All right. All right, seeing no more hands, we will go to committee reports. Finance Committee.
We met earlier tonight, pretty straightforward. I guess the hot topic of the evening was the lack of state aid payments being withheld to cover the projected open enrollment out, and basically, again, Carol, if I misspeak, please correct me, but basically those payments out are being, or the payments in are being withheld until June to cover what would be our projected open enrollment payment out in June. So, the discussion was, again, the money coming in isn't in, but that money was going to go out anyway. The pinch point will be June, potentially having to borrow money to make payroll, whatever, because that aid payment didn't come. So again, to be determined. At that juncture, we talked about preparing a budget for 2021, given the enormous amount of variables that we do not know, and again, hopefully we will have that in February, and I've instructed Carol to just put it together and list the biggest variables and unknowns that we have, and if those come to fruition or don't come to fruition, then we will at least have, here's the starting point, we know we're not going to get those aid payments, here's at least where we're at as we transition and the election coming up, so that everyone is at least on the same page. And I believe that is it. Did I miss anything?
All right, thank you. Administrators' reports? We'll do that, we'll do that at the beginning of comments, we'll do that there, if that's all right with you. Or we, you know what, we can do it now and just, because then we'll call it like Carol's report. So, I've got, everybody's got one here? Going along with, we'll use this as Carol's business manager report as well, and going along with Justin's comments and the finance committee issue, Carol and I have been looking at kind of the more global scope of what Justin was referring to on a more monthly basis, trying to rebuild a budget model as a forecast for next year, and what we tried to do is, just as he said, trying to pick some of the biggest variables that we could, plug them in and see what would happen, and we're going to pay particular attention in the Baird Budget Model Forecast, particular attention to the yellow column, that would be for next year. On the multicolor, pay particular attention to the, what color are those?
Blue.
Blue. The blue section towards the top, just opposite where the headers are, that's where he was referring to those state aid payments that won't be coming in, and then on the, we used open enrollment, we've been talking about open enrollment for how long now, about how that's going to impact things. Do me one favor, Sue, leave it open about one inch. Perfect, thank you. So we've been talking about open enrollment and the numbers and how that impacts our situation here. So if we look at those variables and we look at this scenario one, so the top instance on here, what we did for the scenario for open enrollment is, we made an assumption that every student who would be a resident student in the district next year is coming here. So all of the seniors that are on, so right now, out of ninety-two in our senior class as resident students, twenty-two of them are open enroll out, okay? So that first column where it says OE out 2019-2020 under scenario one on the top, that's what current data is right now. So twenty-two of our seniors right now, of our resident seniors, leave. So what we did for the first assumption, the first scenario, is we took those twenty-two and they fall off the rolls for next year, and then we assume going forward that nobody else is leaving, no other students are going to leave next year. So our best-case scenario is a plus twenty-two on our open enrollment number. We plugged that into scenario one on the top of the Baird Budget Forecast, scenario one in the yellow, that strong yellow section for 2021. What we assumed, if you run down the variables and the scenarios to the left, I'm sorry, to the right-hand side, we assume a wage increase for all employees of 1.79%, that's CPI for next year, okay? At this point in time, right? And again, all of these, please, nobody, whoever's going to run and put it on Facebook, this is a model, this is just where we're starting, okay? So 1.79% increase in wages. We have a current quote of a health insurance increase of eighteen percent. It's actually down from the twenty to twenty-five to forty percent that we had a quote of in October when we spoke to our insurance agent. So the latest one that we heard a couple weeks ago was eighteen percent. Again, open enrollment out, we're assuming all seniors just fall off that twenty-two, and the next line, open enrollment in, is exactly the same. Resident membership, we're showing a decrease of twenty-nine. We have an average 4K, I'm sorry, an average kindergarten through fourth grade class right now, if we take the average of those, we're at about sixty-three kids incoming, so we're going to assume our incoming 4K is sixty-three kids for next year, okay? But we have ninety-two seniors, so that takes twenty-nine kids off of the resident rolls for next year, which is where revenue is generated from, it's generated from residents. We put back in four hundred and fourteen thousand in maintenance that was deferred. That includes maintenance we didn't do last year, and that includes maintenance that would need to be done this year, so that's a two-year basically number, but four hundred and fourteen thousand to start to get things fixed again. Capital leases, we didn't pay anything off in advance, we're paying just what we need to pay, just our regular payments, just like any of us would do with a car payment. We updated, what do we got? We reduced our legal fees, we've had a lot of legal fees this year, as you can imagine, from all of the meetings and things that we've had to require, so we took the budget down by seventy-five thousand. We reduced the election fees, again, we had to pay because of the advisory referendum, we did have to pay a decent amount of money, so we took that budget down by twenty-three thousand. We reduced our projected OPEB payments, which are amounts that are paid to retirees, that comes off, that drops a hundred and twenty-five thousand off of the plan. And then we bumped back in the curriculum purchases that we deferred in the spring because we were afraid we weren't going to have enough money to get through the year. So we're in a better shape now because we saved money then, but we also didn't buy any books, we didn't update anything for a whole year. So, that puts us under surplus deficit. If we do all of those things and we take the revenues, less the expenditures, you're looking at a deficit of 1.87 million dollars as a starting point for a year-over-year expense, this year to next year, with those variable changes. The starting point is to get the deficit down to zero, looking at about cutting 1.87 million dollars worth of stuff, okay? Now, as Justin pointed out, when he was talking about the, if we go back to that multicolored sheet, you can see there what's projected, the December second payment, 2019, and this is this year's numbers, but we're going to assume them because open enrollment is still going to be a significant cost, let's roll them forward a year. So, December second, September sixteenth, we got a payment from the state, six hundred and six thousand. December second, they withheld seven hundred and forty-six thousand. March twenty-third, they will withhold eight hundred and forty-five thousand. June fifteenth, they will withhold 1.83 million. So what happens is, I want you to each think about, we all get paid once a week, every other week, something like that, so I want you to get paid only quarterly, so you're only going to get paid every three months, one big check. In the middle two checks of the year, your mortgage company is going to write you a letter and say, "We don't trust that you're going to pay your bills, so we're just going to hang on to that check." So you have to float a significant amount of money. So where fund balance comes in is the ability to float those low-tide amounts. Some districts, and it'll be pointed out easily, that some districts operate with fund balances in eight to ten to twelve percent, that's certainly something that can happen. The difference is, they don't have to write checks of three million dollars to cover, they get those float checks in the middle, so they don't have a low tide. That's where our difference is. That's why operating without a fund balance or with a low fund balance can be of significant danger. It could be foreseeable that there reach a point, just like Justin pointed out, where this year, it's expected that June will be a potential pinch point, it could be by March, February, March of 2021 that pinch point happens. And instead of only having to cover from June fifteenth to July twenty-seventh where the next check comes in, you're looking at having to cover from March till the June check. That's a significant problem. So, these are the things that as the board sits and deliberates how the budget goes, these are the things, these are the real numbers. So we've said from the get-go, we've shared everything, there's been no secrets, these are the numbers, if we were starting a budget tonight, the budget process, these are what we'd start with. This is the model that we'd use, these are the reasons that we came to these decisions, and these are how we got there. Now if we slide down one notch into the middle section here, scenario, well, we've got base and then it says scenario number one. Scenario number one assumes an increase of fifty open enrollment students. So, we take those twenty back and it ends up being a net of thirty that we would lose. Now let's look at, in a real number, scenario number two, that's where we plug that in, but if you look back, and we don't have the one, I apologize, I don't have the form with the resident students on it, right now, our kindergarten, our 5K, we have about fifty percent open enrollment out of 5K, whereas we have twenty out of ninety-one seniors who open and roll out, we have fifty percent, we have thirty-one out of sixty-two of our current resident kindergarteners that open and roll out. So it's not unreasonable, and as a board, as a board member, we always budget and unfortunately have to budget conservatively. We can't go heavy, we have to go lean when we make these decisions. So, that leads, if we take that fifty in, now all of a sudden, that deficit, instead of being 1.876, now balloons up to 2.1. One more notch down, we adjust that open enrollment to a hundred students, which again, if we base it off of this year's model, which is what our increase, when we went from thirty percent to forty percent, we lost a hundred students this year to open enrollment. That takes the budget deficit to 2.51 million. So as we're sitting here as a board, again, when the modeling happens, this is what it looks like, this is where we start, and if you come to any, any of the committee meetings, any of the budget hearings, anything like that, and if you would have been part of it, going into it, all the open meetings, we started with this model, and every month we would update the model to say, what's, how have the numbers changed, where are things looking, how's it going? So this is what, this is what we did. So you're seeing the inside of the sausage factory right now, this is it. Okay? So we didn't just, as we come up with these ideas, we try, and Carol, I can't say enough about how great she is to work with, and I mean, but as we sit down and as we as a board, we try to think of every little variable and nuance that we can, because you start to run out of ways to cut three reams of paper to save 2.5 million dollars. There is a reality that comes with things. So, we run back through some general ideas that we've talked about through all of our presentations to date. We projected closing an elementary school would save roughly 650,000 gross. So just for the sake of ease and math, let's bump that up to 800,000, just because it's easier. So if we start with that middle scenario at 2.1 million, we take 800,000 off, we're down to 1.3 million in deficit. Now let's cut out the 400,000 in maintenance and just say, we'll buy more garbage cans to catch the leaks if we need to. So that brings us to 700 and 400, now we're at 1 million left, and if we cut two more administrators at, say, 100,000 each, that's another 200,000 that we save, there's 800,000 left to cut. These are the decisions that the board has to think about, because as we walk the hallways and say, I mean, this stinks, what would you like to cut? We already know how we've gotten here, as far as what's been cut, classroom budgets are, have been trimmed already, building budgets are trimmed already. We are where we are, but this is, this is the next step, is looking where to find anywhere from 300 to 800,000 dollars before we even get the first inkling and look at open enrollment numbers, because where we start is, we will get open enrollment applications, and last year we had it, we had 130 open enrollment applications and 100 used them. So we again have to budget on 130, because if everything goes south, you've got to be ready for it. But it reaches a point where I don't, I don't know what else to do, and go ahead.
Carol, kind of one point, I would assume that with them withholding the payments this year, they're going to withhold next year as well, and that'll be a continual thing, given the juncture in state we're in.
Increases and your open enrollment increases, Mike, I'm curious to know what else they're going to draw from, if there's not enough state aid to cover it. Because right now, if you look at this year, the total state aid was 3.4 million, and the total amount due for open enrollment was 2.8. So if we get the hundred additional open enrollment out, what's that gonna, how's that gonna look? It's a very intricate web, one thing impacts the other, and so if they'll take all of our opening, all of our equalization aid, and then if that's not enough, then what? I don't know yet, I got questions.
Talking in fairness to Carol, because she hasn't been part of a district where open enrollment is this significant of an issue, Sharon, who was here before Carol, when we were talking about, yeah, that's how they do, I mean, yes, this is how it's been done before, so it wasn't, it's kind of just because you were, you hadn't seen it before, even in thirty-five years of doing this, you hadn't seen this before. So that's just one of those things that comes up. So if you haven't seen it in thirty-five years of being a business manager, it's tough for us as board members to try to wrap our heads around it too, but doesn't make it any less real. Any questions from board members about this, going into where we're at? Okay, yeah, and that's all it can be, and unfortunate, as we ran into last year, when we were getting ready for the referendum question, one month we were short 500,000, and a month later, as numbers came in, all of a sudden we were short 750,000. So it's, it's just, and I know, Matt, I mean, that used to drive Matt up the wall, and drives us all up the wall, but as somebody who runs a business, how can you miss that far? Well, because there's so many variables, and it's calculus on a moving plank, and that you have to throw behavior into it on top of it, and as soon as you throw behaviors, you have, it throws everything for a loop. So, all right, thanks for indulging me. Any other questions on that? It all makes sense? Okay, thank you for all your time doing it, Carol, I appreciate it. All right, now that I stole all Carol's thunder for administrators' report, yeah, now, oh sure, now you're done, yeah, all right. Consent agenda will be handled as a singular motion to approve...
I'll make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Questions on any of the items? No? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda carries. Add to the action items, action item A, consider approval of district space and program availability for the 2020-2021 open enrollment applicants.
Move to approve of the district space and program availability for the 2020-2021 open enrollment applicants.
Steve?
Annually and as required by state law, in January, respective school boards need to consider whether or not there are spaces or seats available in their district for open enrollment applications into the school district. You are able to, if you so choose to do so, place caps on both regular education and special education seats. The recommendation is that you do not place any caps. Again, this is on open enrollment in to the district, not out. The board has no authority to establish criteria to deny someone the opportunity to leave, that is the responsibility of the non-resident school board. Many of them are making the same determinations at some point in time in January, whenever they meet. I would encourage that the resolution indicates specifically, Tracy, no caps either for regular education or for special education.
Questions or comments from board members?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the district space and availability to be noted as no caps for regular ed or special ed, as noted by Dr. Bloom, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Action item B, consider approval of annual notice of educational options as presented.
Motion to approve annual notice of educational options as presented.
Steve, you're up tonight.
Again, it must be annual and law night, as required by state law, in the month of January, the board needs to take action on, as specified, the annual notice of educational options. In essence, what we do is we update to the current school year, and we also update the results of the most recent school accountability report card scores. So that's been done, and then that's reposted to the district website.
All right, questions? All those in favor of the approval of annual notice of educational options as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Action item C, consider approval of issuance of preliminary notices of nonrenewal to PEASD administrators as outlined in Wisconsin statutes 118.24.
Move to approve of issuance of preliminary notices of nonrenewal to PEASD administrators as outlined in Wisconsin statutes 118.24.
So this one, any administrator on staff is, and any employee on staff, is afforded the opportunity to receive a preliminary notice of nonrenewal by a specific date, followed the next month by a full notice of nonrenewal. In between, they are allowed to ask for a formal conference with the board to discuss options and discuss how the situation will be handled. Given the numbers that we presented earlier and where we're at, it is the belief of the board, as unfortunate as may be, that we offer preliminary notices to all administrative staff members to afford the board an opportunity to restructure its administrative staffing for next year. I can't say enough about the people who administer at this building, I can't say enough of their kindness, their skill, and this is the unfortunate part of where budgets take us. So, please.
I just really would like to, and I know I'm singling one person out, but Ms. Carrie Tim, for the job she did this year, she has been, and please, I don't take that away from any of the other admins in this building, but just getting our kids what they need in their classes to continue on with the requirements, the flip she has done to make sure that happens has been short of a miracle, so I just want to extend a big thank you to you for everything that you have done for our kids.
And I'd echo the same, Mr. Stick has been a little beacon of light in Eagle, Mr. Greenquist has been a twenty-year staple, and the man everybody knows from generations, and our friends Carol and Steve, who, I mean, I'll be the first to say that as we just got through dissolution hearing and all these processes and things, and we look at this budget, if it weren't for the work that Steve has done in charge of the place, and from Mary DeYoung to Sharon Yanis to... Mary DeYoung to Sharon Giannis to then our friend Carol, we would have been out of money two or three years ago. That's the honest truth of it. They made it work. So, thank you to them, and I wish, I mean, as a person, I wish we could have done better for you. So I'm sorry that this is where it's coming to. Steve, just for clarification, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, can you lay out the dates required? And so, we're only talking about administrators. Do we have to do specific names, or, I guess we probably should for the record, just to make sure we're perfectly clear?
We don't need to do that for the preliminary notices of nonrenewal. It applies to all five current administrators. We'll do that for the final, in the event that there's a change in the perspective relative to that contract.
Six?
Five and a half, six.
Five and a half, so, yeah, okay.
FTEs.
Right, five and a half FTEs.
Right. So the state law, the statute that's referenced to 11824 mentions that no later than five months prior to the expiration of the current agreement, all of the agreements expire June the thirtieth of 2020. Therefore, the end of January is the preliminary notice kind of drop dead date. The end of February would be then the drop dead date for final notice of nonrenewal. There's nothing that would preclude anyone being offered a contract after that point in time, once the nonrenewal process has come to a conclusion.
But on the other token, if we don't, and first off, every administrator knows, and we thank them for their cooperation in doing it, two years ago, a year and a half ago, or two years ago, each one of them threw, tore up their two-year contract. Everybody in this district has been on a one-year contract, which is different than most, if not every, other district in the state. Most administrators are on two-year contracts. Ours have all been on one year. So, they accepted that, and all have continued to do yeoman's work for what they've done. But if this, if we as a group don't take action on this, it automatically rolls over, and you can't, if it gets beyond January 31st, nothing else can happen. So, that's why we have to do this tonight, to let anything else go forward. Okay? All right. Questions? Comments? No? All right. All right. All those in favor of the approval of the issuance of preliminary notices of nonrenewal to PEASD administrators as outlined in Wisconsin statutes 118.24, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Action item D, consider approval of new teacher-mentor-program-coordinator agreement.
Motion to approve new teacher-mentor-program-coordinator agreement.
Second.
Steve?
One of the duties and responsibilities that Kathy Retzke had picked up going into this school year was to manage and facilitate the mentor-mentee program. You might recall that Kathy was participating in year two of the new teacher center training at CISA II. The district had collaborated with Wisconsin Heights to write a Department of Public Instruction educator effectiveness grant, so we split those costs with Wisconsin Heights to pay for staff members to attend that program. As Kathy has left the district, that left a void in the continuation of that program. Given the volume of a number of new hires into the district in teaching positions in classrooms, we felt it was important to continue what Kathy had started. Shelby Nichols has indicated an interest. Shelby is one of the two individuals who is participating in year one of the training at CISA II. The dollars for the stipend would come from Title II money, so federal dollars, which are for professional development, does not come from the general budget.
Okay. Thank you. Questions about this one? All good? All right. All those in favor of the approval of new teacher-mentor-program-coordinator agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Steve, district administrators' report.
Thank you. Just kind of a reflection here on the process that we've all been living through for what seems like an eternity. Basically been about eighteen months, but as others have stated, I wanted to thank publicly service of the members of the Boundary Appeal Board, Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, for their time and energy coordinating the meeting schedule for the dissolution process. I wanted to acknowledge and thank my fellow administrators, their respective leadership teams, and their school boards. As you know, there were duties, obligations, responsibilities, time, energy, and effort placed forth in response to our board taking the order to dissolve. It's hard enough to manage a school district without adding something else to that, so I just did want to recognize my professional colleagues for their time and effort. Also wanted to indicate that I was struck by, regardless of how people felt about the matter, the passion and emotion that people who spoke publicly presented themselves. And in particular, I cannot tell you how impressed I was by our children, our students, the pupils who stood up there in a roomful of people. It's tough enough to speak publicly as an adult, alone as a fifth grader or a third grader or a senior in high school. So I think our kids did a wonderful, commendable job in their presentation in a public forum. And then finally, I guess, and I've said it before, I've said it, I think, almost every month that we've met as a board, in spite of the black cloud hanging over the district, our employees have done yeoman's work, lion's share of work, uncertainty, people came here voluntarily knowing what potentially a circumstance might be. Our staff members continued to work diligently to strive towards meeting our mission statement. I can't thank them enough for their efforts in doing so. So kudos to them. Did want to recognize those who were able to gather together and create a really wonderful ceremony for the dedication of the Duane Wild basketball court, the high school gymnasium that happened about a month ago, December the thirteenth. Certainly well-received, and Dewey certainly was a very honored recipient of that recognition. This week is Adult Crossing Guard Recognition Week, so I wanted to indicate thanks and appreciation to those who are spending time outside, although weather hasn't been all that bad as it has typically in years past, but it'll catch up to us. We've also had, quite frankly, a revolving door in that position over here, crossing students on northwest and the main drag through town. So, we're trying to cobble together that position. As people take a position and then leave, it creates a void that's filled by current staff, so thank you to those folks. Wanted also mention, January 20th in-service, that's next week, Monday, we're doing a run-hide refresher training with folks from the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department. We felt it was important administratively in light of current events, some of which took place quite locally to us, as well as the fact, the aforementioned turnover in staff that were not here several years ago when we had that training, it was time to do a refresher, in an effort to keep our kids safe when they're here in school, and also to guard and protect one another. So that training will take place next week, Monday. It's no school day for students, but that's what the in-service will be. I wanted to present to the board, although you're not required to take action under Wisconsin Act 143, which is the safety, school safety program. You know that we were granted dollars for school safety projects. Carol and I have been working to zero those out and to provide the last claim for both of those grant programs. Did quite a bit of work in the district utilizing those monies, but one of the requirements is that the board, at least here, of the written reports for each of the buildings, in our case, all three schools, for the safety drills that they had conducted, and those reports are included in your electronic packet. They went well. Chief Turan, I want to give thanks to, he actually wrote a written report, and his reflection, because he was present the day they did theirs at Eagle, and so Matt Stick and I, and Chief Turan will sit down and kind of review that, and, you know, take a step necessary to improve the process so the kids are even more protected in a situation hopefully unlikely to occur, but in the event something were to, we want to be prepared. I think that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Onto announcements and board comments. I wanted to set this time aside for the board to have a bit of a discussion as to how we as a board go forward. We certainly all have different thoughts about where we have come from and where we're going, and so, one of the discussions, and I sent an email to you a couple weeks ago already, in anticipation of however things we're going to turn with the boundary appeal process, an opportunity for anyone who wishes to leave the board, given the new circumstances, to be able to do so and still allow the district to operate in a proper fashion. We need to always keep a quorum in place, meaning we always have to have four members left on the board. If not, we expose the district and us as board members to the potential of litigation, where if any action were to be taken with only three sitting members, it's not legal action. It's not a meeting. Nothing's official. So, if four of us were to leave the board at once, technically, the other three couldn't even reappoint people. And there's actually a situation right now, or not a situation, but a resolution at the Wasby or the School Board Convention coming up, where this happened in Beloit. They had a whole bunch of people leave at once, so there's questions about how the district could even have a meeting to appoint people when the majority of the board quit. So, I turn it over to, the next step would be, once we all kind of air out where we want to go and what we want to do, then it is how we move forward, because we do have board policy in place to handle replacements and how that works. It's written down, I brought it, that I can read any questions that you guys have about it. But I guess first we decide how it's going to go down. I don't know, if I go, you want to go? Have at it, please.
First and foremost, I want you all to know that I love Palmyra Eagle Area School District, and have always wanted the best for it. This is why I fought against annexation, it's why I ran for the school board, and why, for me and my family, I felt the additional fifty dollars per month for my family, that's what it worked out to for my family, by the final year of the referendum, was worth it for the community. Our district is a vibrant, eclectic, and loving community with children who are fantastic individuals that are achieving great things because of the education they are receiving in our district, and the passionate support they receive from the faculty. The negative stories heard during open sessions do not reflect anything my family has ever experienced in this district. This past year's been filled with many low points, and the hateful negative things said about the district, this board, and me personally, I freely admit, it hit me hard many times. While the saying "Sticks and stones do break bones" goes, I all think all of us up here can agree, from time to time, names do hurt. Considering many of the NOPers, and that's what I call the people who are adamantly against the district, NOPers, they banded together, many of them out of their anger of their children being bullied. They then turned around, and it did not stop them for one second from turning their group mentality onto others. Their hatred of this district is palatable at times, and in the snarky comments, accusations, and memes made, I have been called a thief, I have been called a criminal, a member of the mob, I have been accused of stealing money from this district to take a vacation, I have been accused of breaking the law as the board clerk. I have had personal photos on Facebook shared on comment sections of local news sites, and even a personal picture taken and used as a profile picture on the NOPer page. There have been calls for us to be jailed, and to dig into our personal backgrounds and to, in quotes, excoriate us all. Little hypocritical, don't you think? And all of this because we chose to stand up to try and make a difference in the community. Instead of sitting back and throwing out accusations based on no actual knowledge of decisions made, because in today's social media society world, that is simply easier than sending an email and asking a question. I stood up and I tried to make a difference. So tonight, I am submitting my resignation as a member of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District. Before I make it effective, I would like to say to those who fought against dissolution, I feel you guys are doing nothing but prolonging the anxiety of our kids, the Civil War mentality that is ripping the community apart, and are going to turn this district from what it actually is into what the NOPers think it is and what they want everyone to believe it is. Tara, Doris, Mitzi, and Jean, none of you reached out to ask questions, but you threw us under the bus saying that you did. I was the one who reached out with a K through 12 scenario budget to try and help you see that the numbers don't work, and got nothing but slapped back in return. Doris, you did send me an email, not asking any questions, only asking me to recant my vote publicly. I sent you an obnoxiously long reply back that took two days to type, outlining my reasons as to why I could not do it, ending the email telling you I would be more than happy to sit down and listen to any viable plan you had, whether it was with you alone or in a small group. I got nothing back. Now you have NOPers gearing up for another annexation fight, as well as a potential court battle, which has the potential of taking thousands, if not millions, of dollars out of this district, on top of the money that we had to spend for the ridiculous referendum, and I do mean it was ridiculous. It meant nothing, it held nothing, and the majority of the community does not wish to support this district, and it was, they said it twice. Because of that referendum, we took money out of the community, and we took valuable time away from the school district Boundary Appeals Board. Bottom line, and some of these numbers are no wrong, because Scott updated the thing, but I'm in the ballpark. Bottom line, in your best-case scenario of closing a building, selling Palmyra Elementary, getting two hundred thousand in community match money, you are still seven hundred thousand dollars in the hole, in the fund balance for the 21-22 school year, and that's only if not one single kid leaves the district between now and then. Nothing in your ideas presented or possible secret donors would give me the confidence as a parent that this district will be around after the next school year. How does that grow our enrollment? How does that keep incoming freshman class from staying and not leaving? I want you all to prove me wrong, please know that. I want to be wrong about this. But, from what I know from being on the board and actually asking the questions and finding the information out, is that there is not enough money or time for that to happen. Also, you need to remember that this board represents the community and the taxpayers, not ourselves as individuals. Our constituents, our bosses have spoken, and they need to be listened to. Finally, to this board, Dr. Bloom, Sharon, beforehand Carol, Tracy, Carrie, Tim, our teachers, our outstanding individuals, you all made the tough decisions that no one wanted to make. You fought hard for our kids, and have tried to move mountains to make things work, to give our kids everything they need. Thank you, each and every one of you, for the work that you have done. It has been a pleasure to serve with each of you. So effective at the close of this meeting, I do resign my position as board clerk and member of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District.
You made me cry, Carrie.
That's why I went first.
Yeah, thanks. I want to let everybody know that it's an honor that you're all here, rather than going to listen to President Trump, so I feel blessed that you came to hear us instead. When my girls were born, I made a decision.
You want me to go?
As we all do as parents, that I was going to be involved in every aspect of their lives, whether it be home, church, or school. I was very fortunate to be very active in their activities when they were younger. When Samantha started 4K at Palmyra Elementary, I was able to walk her through the same halls that I had walked through as a youngster. I probably graduated from Palmyra Eagle High in 1986. Don't do the math. After I graduated, my parents had several special needs foster children in this district for many, many years. They loved the staff and school here, and always spoke very highly of them. I was very proud to bring my girls back to the country and to this district. I volunteered in many classrooms, helping out with teachers and students in those reading bags and more math flashcards than I care to remember. The patience of lower elementary grade teachers is amazing. I was eventually hired as a part-time aide in the special needs classrooms, which unfortunately, after my dad passed away, I had to take on a real full-time, much better paying job. I'm sure I drove Steve Greenquist crazy with continually asking him if there was any other committee or groups that I could join to help our school grow. I joined the Palmyra, he hooked me up with the Palmyra Home and School, and I found myself soon serving as president of that, which I thoroughly enjoyed. Thank you to Rebecca Hanschow for serving with me, and we had some really great events. Thank you to Rebecca Hanschaw for serving with me, and we had some really great events. Stephanie started 3K at Jefferson County Head Start, and within a month, I was appointed on the Head Start Curriculum Board there, as well as helping out in the kitchen, making lunches every day. Cooking is not one of my strong suits, but I did it. Many of you remember Dave and Mary Traver. Dave recruited me to be on the Yes to Schools referendum committee, which involved countless hours over many, many months. I'll never forget walking into his living room where he had a full-blown phone bank set up, and I got very scared because talking to people was not one of my strong suits either, but I did it. After all of our hard work, as we know, the referendum sadly failed, shocking. After that, I ran for school board and somehow won, and I proudly served here in this room for several years, including several as vice president. My first school board meeting, we were tasked with finding a board president, a district superintendent, and a high school principal. Nothing major, right? My promised one-meeting-month gig had just quadrupled. We then fought the open enrollment hemorrhage in Eagle, tried to find a school principal that the parents approved of, which let me know, which, let me tell you, was no easy task. Thank God for Matt. We fought the annexation, redistricting issue with our neighbors, which if it wasn't for the $7 million-plus asset check we would have had to write to Mcguannaco District, maybe that's something we should have just let play out. But it was one of those times when we stood strong and we were determined to not let anyone mess with us or our district. After that, we were hit with an onslaught of coaching issues, field trip issues, staffing issues, increasing costs on everything from gasoline to health insurance. I still hadn't reached my one-meeting-a-month-promised gig. I had to fight my ex-husband in court to keep my daughter in this district. A fight I never dreamed I would have to fight, nor did I dream I would lose, but I did. I proudly served as committee chairman for Curriculum Policy Committee, which developed an ongoing five-year curriculum replacement schedule, something that's been put on hold, but something that had not been in place for over 10 years, and we were very proud of that. I'm not one to be big on test scores, but I believe the newer curriculum and advancements had placed a big role in our improved test scores. I was honored to serve several years as chairman and now serve on Public Relations Committee to sort through countless ideas and PR campaigns to try to move our district forward, all of these meticulously put into place by Stephanie Schroeder. I would be scared to think of where this district would be without the efforts, blood, sweat, and tears of Stephanie. I was very proud to serve on this board, which for a little over two years, we were the first board in over 20 years where each of us had students in one or more of our schools. We weren't just fighting for your kids, we were fighting for our kids, and that makes it a lot more personal. I said all this to say this, for people to accuse me of not fighting for this district, having a lackadaisical attitude, being untrustworthy, or not knowing how to properly work through issues, or the one that hurt the most was saying that I just didn't care. I have some choice words for you, most of which I cannot say because this is being recorded, so I'll simply say you could not be more wrong. I will say I'm tired. I'm tired of fighting and beating my head against a brick wall called the State DPI and their laws and policies that are continually in place that just do not support public schools in a way that I believe they should. I'm tired of fighting the continued issues of open enrollment, which again, the state so wonderfully put into place for us on a district level to try to sort out and pay for. I'm tired of fighting people who publicly say they support their school in a village or town, but in private continue to vote against opening their wallets to support said schools. I'm tired of watching two communities continue to tear each other apart, something I watched since I was a kid. Even though considerably progress has been made with children and combining activities, the parents continue to bicker, to put it nicely, and kill the school spirit we've worked so hard to put in place. I'm tired of being told how wrong I am and have to listen to criticism and critiques of me truly doing what I thought was best. I continue to stand by my decision and my vote that the best thing for this district was to dissolve. However, if there are people with a fresh round of fight and passion in them that say they can do a better job than I, then whom I to stand in their way? My one request is that it be made clear to these kids that this process is not over. There are too many running around thinking that the school is saved, which is far from the truth. The emotional roller coaster that they have already been on is not fair and very sad. They deserve far better. There are not many times in my life where I challenge someone to prove me wrong, but this is one of those times where I truly hope they do. So in order to give them as much time as possible to turn this ship around and not have to wait till the April elections, I, Tara Bowman, hereby resign at the close of tonight's meeting of the Palmyra Eagle School District School Board. I cannot say enough about the board, the staff, and especially students of this district. They are truly a wonderful group of people, and I was honored to be associated with them. I would like to thank Marie Collman, Tom Novak, who helped me so much in the first months of me being on the board, Carrie and Amy, who came on so I wasn't the only girl on the team, and our many hours of discussion to sort through things and venting about the boys. And Scott, thank you for your many words of encouragement, as well as your tremendous leadership for the school board and the Palmyra Eagle Area School District. Thank you.
You all have seen Titanic, right? So you know at the end when they look at the lifeboat and it's all the women and children and the one captain? Well, I resign. Somebody in the community is willing to give $100,000 for me to go away? It's on record. They're going to give $100,000 in matching donation for this board to flip over? How selfish would it be to stick around? So I join the ladies. So I don't mean to stick you guys with a mess, and I apologize for that. But this, I think the only agreement in the room is that I got to go. So that's where we're at. So with that being said, I would suggest that we, Steve, did you look through the officer situation? I know it's going to be important that we appoint a clerk, so none of us have resigned yet, the meeting's not over. So Carrie can officially resign as clerk immediately, and then what, so that we can get somebody appointed as clerk? Or is it your suggestion to just let the four, I mean, we're going to have, there's going to be some signatures needed here pretty quick?
Correct. So my suggestion would be that the four remaining current board members either volunteer or appoint someone to serve temporarily in the capacity of clerk until the board reorganizes.
Should we do it now, or do you want to do it, or do it at a special meeting for you guys? I don't want to...
I would recommend doing it this evening.
Yeah, okay. So then, if, it's just a lot of signatures, guys. It's not a hard job. Yeah, you're good. Except for the Facebook thing, yeah. Yeah, right. Because Justin's got treasurer under wraps.
If there's somebody that's willing to do it...
...the treasurer, so somebody else is going to have to pick a role, and you're all going to get one.
Okay. So Mike says he's up. So...
I nominate Mr. Eddy to be treasurer, or clerk.
Clerk. Somebody make a second...
Well, it's really not an action item because it's not agendas as such, so it's an appointment.
Okay. Well, then I, as president, appoint Mike to be clerk. Let's do that. Now, as far as the appointment process goes and filling the spots, I would point to Board Policy 142.5 with vacancies. Filling of Board vacancy, the second section, Sub B, does say the board shall seek qualified and interested candidates from the community through the news media, word of mouth, and contacts with appropriate organizations. Given that, it would be my suggestion, and I've already shared this with each of you, because of the word "and" in that sentence, I do think that it's important to get a notice in the enterprise, which is the newspaper of record or the publisher of record with the district. Because it does say news media, I would strongly suggest that the board get that posted so Steve can send it in tomorrow, that there's openings, and then it will take, I'm sure they won't get it in this week because we've missed the cutoff, so it could be next Friday would be the issue being released, so then you guys can have a special meeting after that. Or you can choose to do whatever you so choose to do. You can appoint as quickly as you want once it's posted, but you can't go beyond 60 days. Okay? The other thing that Steve has brought up, and, go ahead, ma'am.
What, is that something that our, normally...
What's that?
Putting together or posting in the...
No, Steve doesn't.
I was going off on it, but yeah, the office actually doesn't post it.
Steve, so much of the work of the clerk as opposed to what Facebook seems to think. Carrie deputizes Steve to do much of the clerk work, and that's how she can go on vacations and do things like that.
And work a full-time job.
And work a full-time job, yeah, that's right. So that's that. The one thing to note, and it's important to keep in mind with eight people running for three spots coming up, the district's legal counsel did bring up a valid point, and that is appointments, especially if multiple people put in for these three spots, the appointments could be viewed as, like the board is stacking the deck towards one person winning or losing the election. So it is worth, again, not much you guys can do about it, but just a caution that I wanted to share with you, because I spoke with Doug when we were getting ready for the meeting the other day, that that is something to keep in mind. It would be much easier if those submitting paperwork were to consolidate their efforts, and if you only happen to get three papers in, that would make it very easy, but a fourth one creates a bit more of a conundrum. So that's where that's at. Okay? All right. Questions or anything else? All right. I grew up with Cory. I grew up looking up to Justin. I've grown to know each of every, each of you guys, and I'm proud to call you friends. Thanks for letting me be on the team, and again, I'm sorry to have left the mess behind.
Thank you for your leadership.
No, thanks. All right. Next regular board meeting will be on Tuesday, February 11th. Please keep an eye on the district website for any special meetings or postings that will come up. We don't send invitations, they'll be posted online. The board will now consider a motion to adjourn to closed session. The board will consider a motion to move to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851(c) to wit to consider employment compensation and evaluation data regarding one or more employees over which the board exercises jurisdiction and responsibility to wit the consideration of annual district administrator performance review and evaluation. Tracy, may we have a roll call vote, please? What? Oh, I need a motion. I keep skipping, see? All this time. Thank you, thank you. Okay, now we'll take a roll call.
Carrie Ellis.
Yes.
Justin Thomas.
Yes.
Tara Bowman.
Yes.
Scott Hoff.
Yes.
Cory Jones.
Yes.
Matt Mecca.
Yes.
Mike Eddy.
All right. Bathroom break, 8:15? All right. Thanks for coming, everybody.